Call the meeting to order.
Buzz.
Yes.
Nichols. Lash.
Yes.
Williams. Miller.
Yes.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 8, 2013, regular session, and I move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
We have two public hearings this evening. The first is to rezone property located at 2031 West Monroe, 2095 West Monroe, 2127 West Monroe, 2151 West Monroe, and 2185 West Monroe, and 2213 West Monroe from I-1 Light Industrial and C-2 to General Commercial to -- and General Commercial to R-1 Single Family Dwelling. Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Your Honor, I am one of the petitioners in this request.
Just a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay, now Bruce.
Yeah, I am one of the petitioners in this request, so therefore, to avoid any conflict, I will remove myself from the council table at this time. I'll ask Roger to introduce this, and that I will reserve any comments that I may have only as a resident, not a city manager.
Okay, Roger?
The council has previously noted, this public hearing is to discuss the request of six contiguous properties to rezone their properties along West Monroe within the Bigger subdivision to R-1 Single Family Dwellings. At this time, I'd like Rita Jackson, our Community Development Director, to go over the details of that request.
This public hearing is regarding a request from Olive Street Church of Christ, Greg and Judy Bryson, Kenzie and Mary Russell, Gary and Brenda Peake, Bruce and Cheryl Slagel, and Roger Smith to rezone their properties located at 2031 West Monroe, 2095 West Monroe, 2127 West Monroe, 2151 West Monroe, 2185 West Monroe, and 2213 West Monroe, respectively, from I-1 Light Industrial and C-2 General Commercial to R-1 Single Family Dwelling. These properties, as you can see on the map that are highlighted, are located in the Bigger's Highway 22 subdivision, which are lots four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. This subdivision was planted in 1998, and it consists of 10 lots. The R-1 zoning is lots four through 10, and the C-2 is the 60-foot strip, which is to the back, which is the C-2, which the property owners of lots five, six, and seven purchased additional properties to add to their rear yards. This is the R-1 zoning, and this is the C-2, the 60-foot strip in the back, which is part of lots five, six, and seven. Notices were sent to 12 surrounding property owners within 185 feet of the requested rezoning. City staff received one office visit regarding the requested rezoning, and it was with no objection. The visit was from Lauren Bigger's. At that time, he was the property owner of lots one, two, and three. And since that time, he has sold those lots to Ronald and Virginia Baker. Mr. Bigger's wanted to ensure that we were not rezoning his three lots, lots one, two, and three. Section 15, 393B of the Mexico City Code requires that at such time as a lot which is zoned C-1, C-2, C-3, I-1, or I-2 is developed adjacent to a lot which is zoned R-1, R-2, R-3A, or R-3B, a permanent screening consisting of a masonry wall, a wood fence, seated berms, or combination thereof, at least six feet in height, shall be installed by the developer. So the lots one, two, and three at this time will remain R-1, and as long as they're not being developed, they can -- the permanent screening is not required at this time. If they were to go back and build a single-family residential housing there, it would not be required. The requesting property owners have stated their reason for rezoning is to maintain the value of their homes and any additional improvements to their property by maintaining it as a residential neighborhood. At the July 2, 2013 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the commission made a motion to make recommendation to city council to grant approval of the requested rezoning. A copy of those minutes are attached. Staff recommends that council proceed with the advertised public hearing, and in the audience, we do have Greg Bryson and
Kenzie.
and Bruce for any additional questions.
Okay, since this is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bruce Slagel. My address is 2185 West Monroe, one of the petitioners and owner of Lot 9. I have only three points to make regarding the zoning request. Land use of any property is defined by its use, and these lots are clearly being used as single-family homes. Two is when this area, Bigger's Highway 22 subdivision, was planted in 1998, the intended land use was established as residential, and the zoning should have been changed at that time for the whole subdivision. We, the property owners of lots four through 10, have petitioned for this zoning change and would request that you approve our request this evening. However, I would also ask that the council consider having the Planning and Zoning Commission review and make a recommendation on lots one, two, and three, so that a spot zoning does not occur by leaving them industrial. These zoning lots really should match their intended land use. There is currently no structures on these lots, and therefore, the timing of this review would be appropriate before any building does occur. I want to thank you for your consideration of our request this evening, and hope that you support it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Rita, I have a question. Why would the city have not zoned this residential way back when these houses were being built? I don't understand.
I don't -- back in 1998, I don't have the answer. I don't -- it must have just been an oversight, because it was actually planted for residential lots.
So at that point, I guess it never went through planning and zoning?
It just never went through planning and zoning to have it rezoned.
Okay.
Is it my understanding that one, two, and three have been sold?
Yes. The actual owners of that are Ronald and Virginia Baker.
Do you know if we're going to get a request from them in the next two weeks to rezone that property?
They were actually notified prior to the Planning and Zoning Meeting of the request and what was going to take place.
They didn't make any requests?
They did not make any requests.
Okay.
Rita, were those lots in the city limits when Bigger's laid out that subdivision?
Yes, because that was the old
Baker. Baker Pack.
Baker, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you, Rita. I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Yes.
The second public hearing we have this evening is to discuss the past performance of the city in carrying out the 2008 D-101 Community Development Block Grant Project, and I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This grant was originally received by the city to help with the construction of the Plant Science Center and the land purchase thereof. This project is predominantly complete, and so we are doing the closeout public hearing, and I will turn to Rita Jackson to cover the details.
This public hearing is to discuss the past performance by the city in carrying out the city's FY 2008 D-101 Community Development Block Grant Project, which was a disaster recovery grant in the amount of $4 million. The grant was received by the city for construction of the Plant Science Center, for lease by the joint venture to Soy Labs LLC, equipment integral to the building, and land acquisition. This grant was awarded to the city in March 2010 with the national objective of removal of slum and blight. The land acquisition portion of the grant consisted of the purchase of an additional 52.68-acre parcel by the city in Audrain County for the development of a technology park. This property is located east of the Plant Science Center, north of Highway 54, and along Audrain County Road 820. The property was annexed into the city in December 2011. Staff recommends that the council proceed with the advertised public hearing.
Any questions? Questions from the public? I think I had -- someone wanted to ask the question as to what was going on currently at the Plant Science Center. Is there prospects or anything happening there? Maybe could just give us a brief update?
Yeah, we're currently working with a gentleman named Joe Bannister on several different projects that he has currently having to do with Plant Science that would work in concert with what Soy Labs has been doing at the facility with the creation of different products from soy. Obviously, we're trying to find a different -- another additional tenant for the lab space that we currently do have there, but things seem to be going on track.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Councilman?
Mark, do you have a question? Did you have a question? Okay.
Well, I guess I do have a question. Most block grants, if I understand them, they're tied to employment.
Needs to come up. Needs to come up to the podium. Can't hear you.
I'm just trying to understand how this block there works. Is it tied to employment, and have they met their employment requirements?
This actual grant was actually tied to the national objective of alleviating slum and blight. They actually received two grants, and the second grant is tied to employment.
It is?
Yes.
Have they reported? Met those requirements?
The grant has not closed out yet, but we have not -- we still have funds, and we have not expended, so it's still an open grant. This actual grant was for the acquisition and the construction of the building and equipment, and it's -- most of the grants actually are ready for national alleviation of slum and blight, or for jobs at this point.
So when will you know? When do they have to have the report?
Actually, what's
So felt that.
You actually have five years from the time that you receive the grant and will close it out. Would have not closed out the grant, because we're still having to use all of the funding, so it would be two years after we close out the grant, that they would have to meet the job requirement.
Do you know what the requirement is up there?
It's in 21 employees
12 more?
Tied to the other grant.
How many do they have?
Russell, can you ask a question?
They had a total of 11. 11? Yeah. Thank you. I'm just wanting to
Okay, any other questions, comments? Not. I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Yes.
Under new business resolutions this evening, we have Bill Number 2013-46, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign contract documents with Plan B Development for the 2013 concrete project. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. As part of the, what I'd call the annual street construction projects, we did the asphalt overlay portion and the micro-sill, which have been done, and now this is the concrete portion of the summer projects, and to cover the details and the bidding that we received, I will turn to Kenzie Russell, Public Works Director.
As Bruce mentioned, this is part of our annual street maintenance work that's funded out of the capital improvement sales tax. This is the third contract that we've let that's for concrete work. The major portion of this work will be removal and replacement of areas of concrete on South Calhoun Street from Lafayette Street down to Boulevard. The total, as I mentioned here, of all three contracts sums up at $214,599. We have $250,000 budgeted in the line item. We'll be looking at trying to add some work to one or more of these contracts to extend our work this summer on this. We did get four bids for the work. All of them were reasonably close. They're listed there in council letter. The low bidder is Plan B Development of -- here in Mexico, Missouri, at $71,254, and we are recommending that the contract be awarded to Plan B.
Questions? Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you. I move for reading of Bill Number 2013-46.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bill Number 2013-46, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign contract documents with Plan B Development for 2013 concrete project. Whereas bids made pursuant to the invitation to bid for the 2013 concrete project were opened on July 10, 2013, and whereas it was determined that the bid of Plan B Development was an acceptable bid, now therefore be it resolved by the council of City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the City of Mexico, Missouri accepts the total-based bid of $71,254 from Plan B Development. Section 2, contractor approved herein is subject to RSMO.295.675 requiring the contractor to utilize employees on-site with the 10-hour OSHA construction safety training. Section 3, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Mexico contract documents with Plan B Development, 53791 Redwood Drive, Mexico, Missouri, for the 2013 concrete project. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of Bill Number 2013-46.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Yes.
Next new business resolution is Bill Number 2013-47, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with various organizations for requested funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. We have received two requests for funding, one from the Mexico J.C.s and one from Audrain County Historical Society. Tourism Commission has met and made a recommendation, and to cover the details of the recommendations, I will turn to Roger Haynes.
First of all, I do want to recognize that we do have representatives from both organizations here tonight, Cameron Oliver and Josh Hanley, with the Mexico J.C.s, and Dana Keller with the Audrain County Historical Society, in case there be any questions of them after my presentation. The City of Mexico currently has a tourism tax that is collected by the hotels, motels within the city limits. The attached resolution would authorize the city manager to execute agreements with the Mexico J.C.s and the Audrain County Historical Society to receive tourism funding for an advertising campaign. The Mexico Tourism Commission met on Wednesday, July 17, to review and discuss the application -- applications and recommends to city council of the distribution of funds as follows. For the Mexico J.C.s, 2013 Soybean Festival, to be held on Friday and Saturday, August 23rd and August 24th, it's recommended they be funded $5,000 for advertising purposes. Their request was $8,500. For the Audrain County Historical Society, 2013 Walk Back in Time, which will be held on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, September 27th through September 29th, $7,780 to be approved for advertising purposes, and the amount they originally requested was $8,530. I did attend the Tourism Commission meeting, and they did go over these two applications very thoroughly, and I wanted to bullet point a couple of things they had to consider in making the recommendations to council. First of all, they had to look at the 2013 budget constraints, which they had just limited funds left to stay within their $42,000 per year expenditure limit. Secondly, they looked at what they saw as overnight stays, which is one of the main purposes for funding for these events, to try to attract more people to not only stay in town overnight, but then spend tax dollars here buying things so that we can generate additional tax dollars for the community. They did look at the broad geographic reach of the proposed advertising, again, to see how far that they could pull people in with their advertising to, again, encourage overnight stays. They looked at the length of the events, with the J.C.'s Soybean Festival being two days and the 2013 Walk Back in Time being three days. Staff recommends that council concur with the Mexico Tourism Commission's recommendation and proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Roger, do you have handy there what these organizations got last year?
Yes, the J.C.'s, Mexico J.C.'s, did receive $5,000 last year, so it is an equivalent amount that we are asking for this year. The Audrain County Historical Society received $7,070 last year. This year, they have requested $8,530, and the commission recommends $7,780 based on additional advertising events that they're going to try to partake in, trying to hit heavily the Kansas City and St. Louis areas.
Would either one of the organizations like to make any comments at this point other than what Roger has said? Okay.
Your Honor, I would move for reading of Bill Number 2013-47.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes. Bill Number 2013-47, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with various organizations for requested funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax. Whereas the Mexico Tourism Commission recommends to city council that the Mexico J.C.'s and the Audrain County Historical Society be allowed to receive tourism funding for their tourism advertising campaigns, now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows, that the city manager be authorized -- section 1, that the city manager be authorized to enter into agreements on behalf of the City of Mexico with the Mexico J.C.'s and the Audrain County Historical Society for tourism funding. Section 2, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. Move for passage of Bill Number 2013-47.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Under ordinance this evening, we have Bill Number 2013-48, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering services contract with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for the Morris Street Project. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. We received a grant to help do improvements along Morris Street, such as sidewalks and drainage. As a part of that project, we needed to enter into an engineering contract, and the -- there were requests for proposals and interviews and the selection and the process that we went through. I will turn to Kenzie Russell to cover the details.
This is our enhancement grant, as Bruce noted, and we have finally received back executed copies of the grant agreement from MoDOT, so the -- entering into a design, consultant design services contract is the next step in the process. As noted here, we went through the qualification-based selection process that is mandated in state law and also is part of the grant agreement, and from that, the selection committee, three persons, including Mr. Miller, has one of those selected, Schaefer, Klein, and Warren as the engineering consultant. They've provided a draft services contract to us that follows the format that MoDOT requires for the agreement. The amount of the contract calls for a not-to-exceed cost of $21,237.68 for the design. This is a reasonable cost for the complexity and the size of this project. I would note that Mr. Jerry Johnson, who's principal with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren, is present tonight if there are questions that you might have of him. The staff does recommend that we proceed with this contract.
This is an area that we really want to see spruced up in town, right?
Well, our first objective is safety, certainly. If that helps the way it looks, it's not going to be a bad thing either.
I move for reading of Bill Number 2013-48 by title only.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Yes.
Bill Number 2013-48, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering services contract with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for the Morris Street Project. Move for second reading of Bill Number 2013-48 by title only.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bill Number 2013-48, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering services contract with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for the Morris Street Project. I move for passage of Bill Number 2013-48.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next ordinance we have is Bill Number 2013-49, an ordinance amending the district map referred to in Section 15, 142 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, zoning to R-1 Single Family Dwelling. This is up for two readings by title only and passage, and we just had a public hearing on that, so...
Again, I will remove myself, and Roger may answer any questions. Do you have any?
Counsel, this ordinance ties back to the public hearing held earlier this evening on the six properties located on West Monroe requesting rezoning to R-1 Single Family dwellings. Staff will be glad to answer any additional questions, should there be any, and respectfully recommends that council proceed with two readings and passage of the attached ordinance.
Seeing none, thank you. Okay, I move for first reading of Bill Number 2013-49 by title only.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes. Bill Number 2013-49, an ordinance amending the district map referred to in Section 15, 142 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, zoning to R-1 Single Family Dwelling. I move for second reading. By title.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes. Bill Number 2013-49, an ordinance amending the district map referred to in Section 15, 142 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, zoning to R-1 Single Family Dwelling. I move for passage of Bill Number 2013-49.
Second.
Buzz.
Yes.
Lash.
Okay, the last ordinance we have is Bill Number 2013-50, an ordinance authorizing the vacating of a 10-foot wide utility easement in the Biggers Highway 22 subdivision. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Roger?
As noted, this is a request to consider an ordinance authorizing vacating a utility easement within the Biggers Highway 22 subdivision. To go over the details, we'll have Rita Jackson, our Community Development Director, review the request that is presented.
Again, this agenda item deals with the Biggers Highway 22 subdivision, the 10 lots. The western seven lots numbered 4 through 10 have a 10-foot utility easement that runs across the backside of the lots that are currently, there are no utilities that lie within that portion of the easement. As you can lightly see it on the map, it's highlighted in yellow, the utility easement that runs through the back of the seven westerly lots. Some of the property owners have structures located on the easement and other on contiguous property to the back of the sides of their lots. One of the owners would like to put a structure in the current easement, and by vacating the easement, it would make this possible. Staff recommends that council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance authorizing the vacating of a 10-foot wide utility easement in Biggers Highway 22 subdivision. The ordinance has been posted the required length of time.
Could you go back to that previous map that you had? You were pointing that out, easement, earlier.
Actually, this is where the utility easement lies.
And it runs on the back of all seven of those lots?
Yes.
But we didn't change the zoning on the easement?
Lots 1, 2, and 3.
No, on 7, or 8, 9, and 10, there's no easement back there, right?
No, this was actually, this was C2 zoning, which the property owners in lots 5, 6, and 7, they purchased additional lot property to the rear of their lots. That was not a utility, but this is just C2 zoning.
Oh, okay. I was kind of confused, but I thought that extra, was it at 10 feet? It's not.
No, this is just actually part of the property owner's property.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
I move for first reading of Bill Number 2013-50 by title only.
Second.
Yes.
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 Bill Number 2013-50, an ordinance authorizing the vacating of a 10-foot wide utility easement in Biggers Highway 22 subdivision. I move for second reading of Bill Number 2013-50 by title only.
Second.
Yes.
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 Bill Number 2013-50, an ordinance authorizing the vacating of a 10-foot wide utility easement in Biggers Highway 22 subdivision. I move for passage of Bill Number 2013-50.
Second.
Yes.
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 Okay, under other business this evening, we have appointments to the Mexico Park Board. I believe we talked about this maybe at our last meeting. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. At the last meeting, we had commented that we had an additional request or to serve from Nancy Smiley, expressing interest, and that we had three people that were applying for an extended term, an extra term, and so, at the time, we thought that there might be an individual who had indicated that they wished to get off. Since then, Paul Day has resigned, and so, therefore, I am recommending that Nancy fill that unexpired term.
I move that we appoint Nancy Smiley to the unexpired term on the Mexico Park Board.
Second.
Yes.
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 Okay, claims.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Yes.
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 Next, we have comments. Any council comments? Councilman Bott?
I don't believe I have anything this evening.
Councilman Miller?
No comments.
The only comment that I'll have, Your Honor, is that we believe it should open this week is the new restroom at Garfield Park.
Great.
We paid the bill, right?
Great. Next, we have public comments. Is anyone from the public like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none? I move we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
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 Meeting adjourned.